Hi, everyone. I'm Holly Marie Moore, filling in for Rob this week, joined by Managing Editor Joe Spear and Blue Earth County Elections Administrator Michael Stahlberger. And if you can believe it, we are less than a week out from the election. It kind of feels like it snuck up on us all of a sudden. So we wanted to have you on our podcast just to kind of talk about what you guys are seeing kind of on your end of the thing. So I'll just kind of start off right off the bat, just asking you, what has kind of that early voter turnout looked like?
Thank you. Glad to be here. We're super excited with the elections. As elections administrators, this is kind of our big day, a presidential election especially. We are seeing some pretty high turnout when it comes to voting absentee, or what everybody refers to as early voting. We are seeing upwards of, we're getting very close to 500 people a day coming in to vote their ballots and feed it into our tabulators, which is just some really large numbers, especially when we compare it to 2022 and go back to 2020 as well.
Is it even uncomparable to 2020? I mean, we were in the middle of the pandemic then, but is it getting close?
Yeah, the activity in our office is getting close, and I think that's just because folks are maybe feeling more comfortable compared to 2020. The number of folks who are voting prior to Election Day, we won't catch 2020 because we had so many people voting from home by mail ballot. But when we talked about the interactions, the voters coming to our offices, those numbers, it feels very much like that, the same level of excitement. It's amazing to hear stories from people who have never voted before and they're 50 or 60 years old. And then you also have new folks to the community, and we have people who are now just 18 and getting to vote for the first time as well. So those are all really exciting times.
Right. We had the early registration for younger people, right? And some of the automatic registration with the driver's license. So there's a, there's a big, a bunch of events that are creating this. You brought some numbers with you on the actual people who have voted so far.
Yeah, we love to track numbers with the elections world for us. It helps us know what to expect and the kind of turnout to expect for the election. And so, so far in Blue Earth County, we've accepted nearly 10,300 ballots for this election. Those are ballots that are going to be processed and counted as part of the results on Election Night. And that's based on about 40,000 registered voters. So we're already over 25% of the people registered in Blue Earth County voting in this election. And as I mentioned, 2,500 of those were votes that are, that people have cast in our office and fed them straight into one of our ballot counters. So a really high turnout in that regard. We still have a few thousand ballots out there that folks requested. So there's still some work to do in that regard, but a lot of folks are interested and engaged in this election for sure.
Yeah. And if you don't mind me asking, because I remember you and I had talked about whether or not this could even be comparable to the 2020 election, because it was such an absentee-heavy year. But you had then compared it to 2022. So is what we're seeing kind of higher than 2022? Is it kind of more than what you expected even, even then?
We're higher than where we were in 2022 in terms of the time remaining before Election Day. I think we ended up somewhere with about 12,000 votes prior to Election Day in that instance, and we'll surpass that for sure in this election. So yeah, right on par with that, a little bit higher. Holly, one of the things we always look at is just the number of folks who vote in a polling place versus the folks who vote by mail or vote prior to Election Day. And usually that's about a 25% vote prior to Election Day, 75% vote on Election Day. And what we see now tells us that we're going to be higher than that, probably in that 30 or 35% range.
You said you've heard from some people as they come in to vote, people who've never voted before. Are you getting feedback on the process, hey, this is easy, hey, this is, didn't know it could be done this way? What kind of feedback are you getting?
We do hear some of that. We do hear that folks really appreciate being able to cast a ballot straight into our ballot counters or our tabulators. I'll be one of the first to admit that the envelope process is really important. It is a super secure way to track ballots for 46 days prior to the Election Day. But for voter convenience and their comfortability to know that their vote has been counted, being able to feed it right into the machine is super helpful for them. And that's something we start 18 days before the election. And so we notice folks when they come in during that period of time saying, wow, this is super easy. I'm able to vote, get it done on my schedule, as opposed to having to use all these envelopes and get witnesses. Super important for folks who need to vote from home. We don't want to take that away.
Right.
But having this additional option is something that's really, really appreciated by voters.
Yeah. And speaking of things that kind of start that, that long before the election, you guys are also in your processing period, which I got to take a look at a little bit last week. But for voters who may not know, what does kind of processing allow you to do? And you guys can't necessarily know the votes or the vote counts or the results before the election, but you can start kind of putting them through your machine. So what does, what does the processing period really look like?
Really good question, Holly. The way that I like to think about that is that processing in Minnesota, which starts the close of business 19 days before the election. And the reason for that is because on the 18th day before election, people can feed a ballot into the machine. So we can start doing that with all the mailed ballots. But anyways, we can start that processing process. And what that really does is that allows Minnesota to have results available almost immediately after polls close on Election Night. Other states can't do that, and so they need to wait and actually start processing those ballots on Election Day, right? And it takes them longer to go through their thousands. But so because our ballot board, our election judges, who represent both major political parties in the state, start opening those envelopes, getting them ready for our machines, and then we feed them through our machines. That allows us to very quickly, after polls close at 8:00 PM on Election Day, get results out there and get them shared out with the public and with the free press and others.
Have some results. And do you think it's, you're talking about this a little bit. Is it, the county going to go a little bit faster this year?
We should. Our goal is to always get results out as timely as we possibly can. In 2022, we had a combination of some events that were outside of our control, some guidance that required us to use different processes for that election that we now have clarification in law that we can work through, which is great. And so that should allow us to have ballots, results of those ballots available much quicker. The one thing that we always remind voters, and we talked about previously as well in conversation, is that Minnesota protects the privacy of the vote. And so they don't allow us to release results until we can report all the results for that precinct. And so what that means is if we've got a precinct in Mankato that votes in a polling place on Election Day, I can't release the results of the people's votes prior to Election Day until I've received the votes back from the polling place. We have to match them together before we release them. So we should have some results sooner, but yet there's still going to be a delay because our election judges are going to still be helping thousands of voters on Election Day. They have to take accounting of all of their ballots. They need to keep them secure. They need to return them in a secure fashion. And then we can bring those results together and release them after 8 o'clock or 9 o'clock.
Sure. And you were saying there were some law changes when we spoke to you recently, kind of in regards to the envelopes. So could you just kind of expand on that and how you think that'll make the, you know, the process faster for you guys this year?
Yeah. So what you're referring to there is, in Blue Earth County, we have several jurisdictions, cities and townships, that have elected to have their voters vote by mail ballot automatically. Those are called mail ballot precincts. And we have just under 7,06,700 voters in that category. And so prior to 2024, the 2022-led election was the last one. We were instructed, based on the way the law was written, to require those folks coming in on Election Day to use an envelope. So they would request a ballot from us, even though they were in a polling place, our location. And then they would vote their ballot, fold it up, put it in a secrecy envelope, and then they would put it in a signature envelope to document it. And then our ballot board would take that and process it and open the signature envelope, and then open the secrecy envelope. And then we would have to unfold it and run it through a machine. The legislature in 2023, based on some of the work that our association was doing, made it very clear that those voters have every right to feed a ballot right into a tabulator, just like any other voter who's voting in a polling place. So instead of us having 1,000-plus people come through and use envelopes on Election Day, we now will have those 1,000 ballots go straight into a machine, a ballot counter that will count those results and will have them available. So huge difference.
Yeah, missing, reducing one step or two.
Absolutely. Yep. It's still secure. We still have that voter checking in. What we just don't have to do is open envelopes and unfold ballots and flatten out.
Yeah, that's great. So are there a couple of things you always see people forget about on Election Day? Or what are the most common tips we could give people just to make sure they have everything they need?
Yeah. So some, the, the, the top items that we hear from voters, the frustrations we hear from voters as it relates to Election Day, is oftentimes voters think they can still come to the courthouse and vote. They hear us talk about vote at the courthouse, vote at the courthouse, vote at the courthouse. On Election Day, in Minnesota, regardless of where you live, you have to vote in your precinct where you reside, right? So we can help you find that location. You can use mnvotes.gov to find that location. But we need folks to go to the right location. That's, that's one of the most important things.
People wouldn't think that, like, oh, we've been, right, telling them go to the courthouse.
And do people receive in the mail their precinct location and where they can vote? And you also said they could check on the Minnesota Secretary of State's website?
Yeah, absolutely. The Secretary of State's website is the best place to check because what we find is some folks keep those voter registration cards. That's what you're referring to, Holly.
Sure.
But those get dated, right? If they're looking at one from 2020 or prior, that's old information. And so even though they still have that card, and I've seen them on people's, they bring them in and they're folded and they've been around for a while. We need them to get most current information. So the secretary's website is the best place for that, or calling our office. But you're right, we do mail people information when we have a change to their registration status. If they've updated their name, updated their address, they've just re-registered because they wanted to do that. We would notify them of that.
Now, Minnesota has same-day registration. Do you still get a lot of same-day registration?
We do. We do. Blue Earth County, with us being a home to MSU, a major institution there for students. And then also we have several students from South Central that live on the Blue Earth County side of the river there. We do have a lot of Election Day registration, and so that was the second item I was going to bring up in terms of reminders for Election Day. We want to make sure that folks know that in Minnesota, we do have same-day or Election Day registration, but they need to bring some documentation with them. In Minnesota, they need to prove who they are and where they live. We like to call it face and place is the easiest way to remember that. And so there's a long list of ways to do that. Driver's licenses, passports, student IDs can prove who you are. Utility bills, lease statements, credit card statements, bank statements can show where you live. But we need folks to bring that with them, either in paper form or in digital form, if they can pull it up online. Again, the secretary's site is a great resource to see all of those options, but we want folks to know that they should be prepared for that. And then we also have the ability to have voters vouch for other voters, new voters, if necessary. So multiple ways to register. We just want folks to kind of do their homework and be prepared for that.
Sure. And I think one thing, kind of a sort of different topic is, we had talked about the ability for voters to come and kind of watch the election process after polls close. So for folks who are interested in that process, can you just kind of explain what they're allowed to do? And then kind of second, how are you guys preparing for any possible security concerns that might result from that?
Sure. Two very important questions, especially for this election. So in Minnesota, the polling place is, is very private on Election Day while folks are voting. Only election judges, only election observers that have been appointed by the Secretary of State's office from a different country can be there. We have voters, obviously, in the polling place. That's very constricted and restricted during the Election Day. But once the polls close, then they become open to the public for observation. That gives the public, public the ability to see a transparent process as we close our polls and make sure that we can get all of the results returned to the, to the courthouse for final counting. And so individuals are welcome to enter the polling place. They can't be disruptive. They can't interfere or intimidate. They can't touch any of the records or materials. And then most importantly, they can't actually try to record or get any voter information. That's private data. But otherwise, they are open to the public for observation. If folks are curious to see how election judges work, to make sure that all of the ballots are secure, that every single ballot in the machine has been accounted for, and we have the right number of voters to associate with the right number of ballots, they're welcome to observe that process on Election Night.
Sure. And then are you guys, I mean, have you heard an interest in people wanting to watch this process? And are you guys, what's the process, if anything, were to go wrong? You know what I mean? Yeah.
Sure. Yep. So that's probably the security part of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. In, in Minnesota, we're required as a county elections official to have an emergency plan in place for elections specifically. Our plan is very thorough. We were required to do some pretty major revisions to adjust with the political climate that we have right now. And so ours is now 50, 60 pages long, and it addresses everything from violence in the polling place, threats to our election judges, folks that try to manipulate or tamper with equipment. All of that is based in, in some practical ways in our, in our plan. What we do really is we just always have a backup for everything. And that's why paper is so important in elections in Minnesota. There's always a backup to things. And so we'd have locations that would be available. We work with our law enforcement partners at the city and with the county to make sure that we're prepared to respond to those things. Your other question in terms of, do we have folks that have specifically asked about participating in, in observation or whatnot? In Blue Earth County, we haven't yet. And I think we do some pretty cool things in Blue Earth County to make sure that folks are very comfortable with our processes. We're, we're open to answering questions. We get a lot of questions prior to Election Day, and we just try to be as transparent as possible with that.
You're reading national stories that, excuse me, there. People are considering litigation right away, even before the election. Are we aware of anything like that, or is Blue Earth County dealing with any of that yet?
We do not have anything yet. In 2022, we had some notice that litigation was pending. The litigation never materialized, but it was, we were noticed of pending litigation. We haven't seen any of that yet for 2024. What we do in Blue Earth County, what we hear from many of the other counties, is that we are just making sure that we're following every process. We're dotting every i and crossing every t. We have protocols in place for all of our secure storage areas. We have video cameras in place. We have chain of custody logs. All of our equipment goes out with tamper evidence seals, so we can really create a very strong history of what occurred to lead up to the results. And then what I always like to remind everybody is we always, always, always have a paper ballot. So the most important thing is to be able to reproduce the results that are reported, and we do that after every election. Our canvassing board, who are made up of county commissioners, we have the mayor of Mankato on there, the district court administrator. They will randomly select three precincts after the election and tell us to hand-count those ballots. And then we sit down and hand-count those ballots and can prove that those results are what the voter intended. And we have to do that. That occurs across the state. And we're proud to say that across the state, our numbers are always on. We can explain any differences. And our machines do what they do, and our processes work in Minnesota.
That's good to know. I don't know, I'm not sure everybody knows that, the random counting of, checking of auditing of kind of hand ballots.
Yeah. At our canvassing meeting, they will actually randomly select them. We have no idea what they're going to pick. And then we will actually count those ballots two days later. So that's what we do.
Sure. And, and kind of speaking of, whether it's kind of always having two election judges, one of each party, or the other security measures that you have, what would you just say to voters to kind of reassure them that voting in Blue Earth County and throughout the state is safe and secure?
Yeah. One of the things I love to remind people, especially if they have questions and concerns, is that our elections are so local. They're by design locally run, right? We have, we just appointed, or excuse me, assigned our election judges in the city of Mankato. We have over 400 judges. Neighbors, folks that you live with and near, actually running our polling places on Election Day. And that's multiplied across the state of Minnesota, right? And so I let folks know that, that they're your, your neighbors that are actually taking care of these things. And then we make sure we have party balance, and we have well-trained judges. And we always can document things, and we always account for all of those things. So we like to remind voters that, you know, this isn't some magical process that's happening behind a curtain. It's actually your neighbors. It's individuals who care about their community, care about democracy, making sure that everyone's interests and votes can be counted appropriately.
Sure.
Very good. Well, thank you, Michael. I think you've answered a lot of our questions and to the public as well. Is there anything else that we didn't ask about that you think should be mentioned?
Yeah, I think we've covered a lot of really good topics there. The only thing that I will add is that we do still have about 2,500, 3,000 ballots that are out there that folks had requested. What, what we want is, we want people to make sure they've got their election game plan set. Are they going to vote in person? Are they going to return that ballot? Are they going to drop it off? We just want them to be thinking about the election. I know it's going to pop up next Tuesday, and they're going to see news, and they're going to read it in the paper and all of that. But we do want them to be thinking about that now and making sure that they know what's up for them.
So if they've got a ballot and they haven't turned it in yet, their options are?
If they have a ballot and they haven't returned it yet, they can potentially mail it back, but we're getting very close to that. The ballot must be received no later than 8:00 PM on Election Day. They can always drop off the ballot themselves prior to Election Day.
At the courthouse?
At the courthouse. They can have somebody they trust drop off their ballot for them at the courthouse. We do need folks to bring in photo identification for that. Or at this point, they can still choose to vote with us directly in that direct balloting or vote on Election Day. Even though they've requested a ballot, we know that they've requested a ballot, but they're still entitled to vote by whichever method they wish to vote.
In which case they could just come in and vote normally, and what would happen to the ballot they got?
Yep. So the ballot that they received in the mail would not be countable. We, we have a very, we have a strict process. I don't know if we want to go into that detail, but how we would document that, we sure can if you'd like to. But yeah, so what we would encourage them to do in that instance is to bring it in, but then turn it over to the election judge so that they can account for that. But they will be issued a different ballot to vote.
Yeah. Is it too late to send a ballot back by mail, or?
It's getting close. The post office is doing some pretty incredible things right now to help us get ballots returned. It's really to the comfortability or the comfort level of the voter. We would encourage at this point having folks drop off ballots, just because in that way they know it's been accepted by our ballot board in our office. But the post office is saying seven days, and so we're now at that sixth day. So really close there.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate you being here. And thanks for everyone listening.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, everyone. Welcome back to Freecast. I'm here with Joe Spear and reporter Brian Arola and Casey Eck. Let's talk about some news.
Yeah, we had a lot of big news today, front page news. Did a long, in-depth story on the nonpartisan school board race. That's become sort of partisan, sort of more political than normal. And it's very unusual for a school board race to, to kind of go in this direction where political parties have weighed in, different organizations have weighed in. And I think someone brought it to our attention, a lot of stuff going online, social media. And so people were wondering, what is going on with this? Can we add some clarity? And of course, that's what good news organizations are supposed to do. Go interview people, get people on the record. You know, ask them to respond to critics, ask them to respond to things that are being said, challenge them, and, and do a comprehensive story, and I think ours is. But the genesis of it was kind of unusual. It kind of came from the ground up. And Brian, maybe you can start talking about how we came about this story and then why we decided to do it.
Yeah, I think while this was happening, there was an interaction between a parent and a candidate, a voter and a candidate. She was canvassing a neighborhood. And so that interaction was circulating online. There was a lot of back and forth on different Facebook pages. And the video ended up getting picked up by a statewide organization, a conservative think tank. And so the interest of that group, who's not Mankato-based, in a, in a local race here in Mankato, got us thinking about what groups and organizations are involved. And it turned out we, we found a good number of endorsements and recommendations by different groups that were different than in the past. And it kind of highlighted this increased polarization that we're seeing in school board races around the country, but this time in Mankato.
Holly, you were part of this story. You and Brian worked on it jointly. What, what do you think is behind the story? Why did we, why was it important to do this story?
Yeah. And as, as Brian kind of touched on, we noticed, you know, school board races are typically nonpartisan. But, you know, as, as we were reporting, there's been, you know, a lot of groups, some of them outside Mankato, even the Minnesota Parents Alliance, who are endorsing candidates, which is, I talked to the Minnesota School Boards Association as part of the story. And it's kind of a rising trend over the past two election cycles. And when I talked to Kirk Schneiderwind from the MSBA, he kind of cautioned against endorsements becoming a trend because it could almost add an extra thing for voters to consider when they're voting for a school board. When, he said it was, you know, kind of focused just on, on the community and what's best for the schools. So I think we kind of felt it was best just to kind of break down who's endorsed who and just kind of give voters kind of a transparent look at, at what they're voting for and what's on the ballot.
Yeah, I think what's interesting about this story is you had endorsements from some sitting school board members of some candidates. So that was kind of unusual, but that was even kind of after the fact that these organizations recommend certain candidates. And we know, we asked them how they go about that process, and a few interesting things come up. They don't really talk to the candidates. They take them, what they've said and where they've heard them speak. And I'm not sure where they get their, the information, but I know we had to talk to them about that. And so there were several that were, and then for the first time, political party, well, I don't know if it's the first time, but the, the Blue Earth County GOP, right, endorsed some candidates. Now, the DFL did not endorse candidates, but a local group, the Indivisible Group, which is a grassroots progressive organization, did also endorse candidates. So how was it, Brian, on this kind of a story, how, what's the trick in balancing the interests and making it look fair? Or making it be fair?
You want to reach out to everybody, talk to the groups involved, at least give them a chance to air what their, I guess, process is in going through these endorsements or recommendations. These, some of these groups and candidates distinguish between those two words, which for voters probably functionally means the same thing. But yeah, you reach out to the groups, just hear about what that process looked like. What does an endorsement mean? I remember that was a question for, that I had for Indivisible. What does that mean? And for them, it's a reflection of their values. They feel like these candidates are the ones who reflect what they care about. For other groups, it might have been the same or similar. But that's, one of the, the keys in this is hearing from all the groups. And we reached out to every candidate on the ballot this year. We didn't hear back from them all. We appreciate the ones who, who did respond and give us some information and their thoughts on this. But that's the key, is reaching out to everybody and making sure that they have a chance to comment if they choose to.
And we also tried to reach out to as many groups as we possibly could too as well, in addition to the candidates, which, which you just touched on. But yeah, we reached out to Minnesota Parents Alliance, the Blue Earth County GOP, the DFL, and, and pretty much everyone who we thought would be involved in this. And then, yeah, as you said, just to kind of make it as, as fair as we could.
Well, it almost seems like we spent a good deal of time talking about the partisan nature of this race. And we didn't get into too many issues, like, you know, how do you feel about the school budget or, you know, things like this. And although we've done interviews with all the candidates to cover that, so we've covered our base there. But it seemed like the issue of race came up in this one in particular. You know, we talked about the parent who, and please read the story. It's a very long, involved story. We can't go through all the details here. But it was one parent who was concerned about one candidate and what they said regarding the affinity groups. The affinity groups, you know, are basically groups of students, people, kids of color that can, can go in a group and feel safe, or just, you know, as, as I understand them. And Holly, maybe you can add to us. They're, they're groups where the students, you know, have a chance to speak their mind, you know, comfortably with others that may be going through some of the same issues. Is that about the way to describe it?
Yeah, I think that's how I would describe it. Yeah. And yeah, the, from what Brian and I understand, and we tried to find the original source of the comment the, the best we could. But the comment that you're referring to is underneath the post about an affinity group. So that's kind of why that's relevant to the, to the story.
So it gave people an idea about what people think is a racist statement. And I, I'm guessing some of our readers probably would never have thought of that. So hopefully it kind of draws the line in educating our readers a little bit about the issue of race and the sensitivity surrounding it. But so in, in the end, you know, our goal is to report a thorough story with multiple sources, multiple sides of the issue, and give readers a sense of more about these candidates and, and who they might vote for. Anything else, Brian and Holly, you guys can think of that's important about this story?
Just one thing that comes to mind is the differentiation we had and the, the different categorization of the groups. So we had these, we had what we saw as outside groups. There were, Minnesota Parents Alliance, an example of an outside group. We had political party, the Blue Earth County GOP, and then we had local groups, Indivisible and the school board candidates. So kind of breaking it down by that, so people understand, here's why some people think an outside group endorsing or recommending in this race is fundamentally different than a local group doing the same.
That's a good point.
Yeah. And yeah, that's, and then the other thing was just, again, just the nature of, one thing I think that readers should take away from this is that, just the, the recent trend of recommendations and endorsements and kind of how that's really made this, this kind of more unique in a sense of a school board race. I think it's, is the key takeaway we want people to, to look at when they read this piece.
And what's interesting is we're, of course, preparing for the election. And when you look at the Secretary of State's site and how they report the results of a school board race, they list it as nonpartisan.
Right.
So it's, it's not that we're making up that it's nonpartisan. It's traditionally been the history of these races, and they're nonpartisan. So that was a great story. I think we put a lot of time and effort into that. Again, it's the kind of great journalism we want to bring you, the in-depth journalism. You're not going to get that kind of a story on social media, on Facebook, on Instagram, anywhere else. We have connections to all those social media, and you should go to those social media as well. But this is just basic hardcore journalism that we're glad to bring to people every day.
Absolutely.
We've got other news to cover here in this, in this short segment. But Mankato had a huge Day of the Dead celebration on Saturday. And Casey Eck, you're, you've been closely involved with that. And it seemed really a lot bigger this year. It seemed more robust, more food. And of course, they had it. They blocked off the new Riverfront Drive to have it back on the street. What, how do you feel like it, it went this year?
It was unquestionably bigger than I'd ever seen it. I've been attending and photographing it for the last few.
I've been attending and photographing it for the last few years, several years, however you break that down. And every year it seems to get bigger. There seems to be new attractions and a more diverse cast of folks who come, you know. And when I say diverse, I mean all all walks of life. I mean, the folks who were born and raised in Mankato, the folks who were born and raised, you know, south of the border and and everybody in between. It really is a tremendous kaleidoscope of people that you might see in Mankato. I, my family is, of course, close to the organization process. And speaking to them, they reckon it was around 20,000 or more people down there. So a pretty sizable turnout for that. And just seeing the people light up is always a good thing. And as a photographer, it's always an interesting challenge, not because there is a lack of things to shoot, but because there are so many things to shoot.
Yeah.
And no matter where you looked, there was something new to see, new interaction and a new way to look at things in Mankato.
And speaking of of new, one of the things that was new this year is you locally planted the marigolds that were used on the on the altars at the at the festival. So what's, and before you guys sourced them from the Twin Cities. So why did you, or could you just kind of further explain the significance of having them locally planted? And and why that was, you know, unique this year?
I I think it, it, we just, well, I'm, to be clear, I'm not part of the organization board. My family is, but I, having the Semper Suci or the marigolds planted locally, they wanted to further affirm the fact that this is for people who live in Mankato. They wanted to have a taste of home, whether that be Mexico or anywhere south of that, who celebrates Day of the Dead. Having them planted here was just a further emphasis, a further emphasis on the fact that it is a homegrown, but reminiscent of something from from elsewhere.
Well, and you hear about, I think a lot of people came from outside the city too, though. A lot of people from the Twin Cities and there were groups, I think. And that's cool to see Mankato having a regional draw event like that. And you say 20,000, but it didn't seem crowded. I mean, it's a big, wide street and, I mean, it wasn't like shoulder to shoulder. You could walk.
No, yeah, you could move, yeah, you could move relatively freely. I mean, it was getting to a point, I mean, at the at the largest swell. I mean, I'm, granted, I was carrying some equipment, so I had to kind of, I don't know. But it should, yeah, it should tell you that just how densely.
Yeah, I got there a little bit later, so it might have been even going down by that.
Sure, sure.
Really cool event.
Yeah. And I think I was there as well. And I think one thing, there's the added significance of this being one of the first events since the roads or before the roads opening, Riverfront Drive, and just being a source of foot traffic for the riverfront businesses was was something special to see. I think those businesses, talking to them, were excited to see people back on the street.
Going to the ribbon cutting on Monday, Monday morning, when the roadway had officially opened, you could just see the catharsis that some of those business owners who had been under a certain amount of duress for the last year or so, they had really felt this outpouring and frankly, relief that, you know, people were going to be back down there again. I mean, just seeing, seeing the smiles and hugs of the people who who were pretty much, from what I could tell, just going, oh, thank goodness. This is kind of over and and we can, we can start to see some people again. And I think the Day of the Dead celebration was a uniquely robust bookend to such a process.
Anything that look you look to for the future of the event? Any other plans people would like to do, something more they'd like to do?
I think, you know, my family has a tendency to just to kind of do more. I think for the moment, they're just in kind of hibernation mode after what has been a pretty tough year for the planning process. It's kind of, it's kind of another full-time job. They run at least some painting coatings. But it's also the the planning process and just getting the vendors and the insurance, all those things and donors. It's, it's a, it's a full-time job. So I think they're going to be resting for a little while. But they're, they're going to be looking to add more and you can expect to see, you know, people's ideas heard as well.
They had a lot of good music, too, I think was really one of the highlights.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else that you want to add or should we move on to sports? East had a huge win. Anything else before we kind of move on?
No, I think I would just recommend, and I would, I would recommend people who feel close to their culture, whether that's German or Korean, whatever you're representing, to just find ways to express that. I think the Day of the Dead is a, is maybe a template for that. And and I think it should just give a lot of people of all backgrounds that encouragement to to represent themselves.
Yeah, it's a unique way to celebrate immigration, you know? I think it, it just, it tells what our country is all about, different customs. We learn, we like them. Once we learn about people's customs, it's kind of cool. It's pretty neat. And I think it's a way to build community and kind of build bridges across the races or ethnicities, but really cool. Yeah, we had some sports, so we better catch people up. Had a second east-west game football of the year. The first one was the jug game, of course, and the second one was a playoff game. And East turned around, they they flipped the the tables and came back and and beat West after losing to West in the jug game, which was their 19th loss in a row. So they broke that scale and will be interesting to follow East football and see on their road to the state. I believe they're playing Friday.
Chanhassen.
Chanhassen. Yeah. And we've beat Chanhassen 43 to 19 in the first round. So good luck to East and and it's great to see that football team really, you know, making some inroads in their success. It's always fun to see. Mankato City Council talked about pot shops where they're going to allow marijuana shops and selling. They're going to limit it to four at first, it sounds like. There's a certain state standard. You got, you can have one per 12,500 people. So that's going to go forward. It's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. They also have some zoning rules that are pretty restrictive. There's not a lot of places. It can't be close to a church or school or daycare and.
Treatment facility.
Treatment facility. So there were, there were not that many places it could be. So it'll be interesting to see how that pans out and and kind of a, there's going to be a public hearing yet too, I believe. So you can weigh in on where, it's interesting because I think, Brian, you cover cops. We did see a, a case of an accident where they THC was involved, right? It wasn't drunk driving, it was impairment by THC. And that's starting to come up a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah, I do see that pop up in criminal complaints and crash, crashes or just DUIs. It's coming up a little bit more. And I guess with the rise and more availability of a substance, you'll likely see a little bit more, more usage of that. It'll, it'll be interesting long-term to see if, to what extent that might be replacing alcohol usage in some cases. So maybe we'll, I think that'll just be a trend to look forward.
Yeah, I mean.
Look at data on those two issues.
I know a lot of, I know a lot of people who, you know, will go to the bar, have a drink, have people you hang out with. But I'd say more than half or maybe even three quarters of them also like the gummies and they like marijuana. So it seems very popular, probably be some news to come yet.
And I think, you know, when the Minnesota Legislature passed that law originally, they had kind of made a lot of jurisdictions surrounding that. But I think the article itself says too, that it kind of left a lot of other decisions up to the city. So it'll be interesting to to see how this continues to move forward and what other decisions. I think you mentioned zoning being one of them that kind of come come out of this.
And we were talking to one of our journalists here, lives in Lake Crystal. Apparently, Lake Crystal has already designated certain parks where you can't smoke marijuana. And then there's a couple that you can. So they've even gotten it down to what park you can go to. So that'll be really interesting. And I mean, I think it throws.
Perhaps we'll see some festivals pop up.
I I think that could be true and that that was the other thing they're regulating, right? If you have, it's, they were saying if you have a marijuana event where you're showing different seeds and different varieties, you can't consume it there. And then somebody brought up, well, what about the craft beer expo? You know, you certainly consume craft beer at the craft beer expo. So all kinds of interesting little questions surrounding our, our new ways to enjoy these products.
Yeah, I'm thinking back to a craft beer expo I covered and there was, there was some consumption going on.
Just a little.
People were having a good time.
Ah, yeah, okay. A la, a last thing I want to mention, and we always want to give a plug to progress on affordable housing. They announced a couple more houses are going to be built with the Mankato Land Trust. This is where the the city or the organization keeps the land. And then the people who buy the house, it's cheaper because you don't have to pay the land. And so they've got two more that are going. I think they've got funding in place for 10 or 13 more. And then the organization is doing it in conjunction with the city, has applied for more grants where they hope to have 100 of these houses.
Yeah.
So that would make a huge difference on on our affordable housing scene. But it's really good to see.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think the article said their big goal is 100 homes, which would, I think, make a difference, especially in a community like Mankato for those who are wanting to, wanting to move into a home, buy their first home or or that sort of thing.
Absolutely. And we see again, new apartments opening up on the front page today, the access lofts. Some of these are pretty nice apartments and they're looking over Hinnaker Pond, for example. And the one downtown, we know the silos is done, that people are moving is that one. So a lot of activity in the housing market is good to see.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you mentioned they're called the, we look at this, the access lofts. Yep, they're up on the former Dutler site, as you said. But yeah, and yeah, do you want to kind of talk about, we've been kind of trying to expand our social media presence and our online presence more. We've been kind of working to post our videos on YouTube. And then I've been helping run the Instagram account. And I think we're trying to kind of reach a younger audience. Joe, do you want to talk about just the importance of getting journalism out to a wider audience?
Absolutely. And I appreciate, Holly, you taking the reins on our social media with reviving our Instagram account. And and we're putting our photos on there, our videos. We got our YouTube channel resurrected, so there's videos, this video of this podcast goes on there. And it's really part of an effort to reach out to a, an audience, probably a younger audience, to get them involved in what's happening in their community. Give them some good journalism and get them involved and engaged, you know? With the interest in this election, I think maybe it's an opportune time to, there's a lot of young people getting involved in this election. It's opportune time for us to reach out to them. And of course, Facebook is where we have most of our followers, 29,000, I think it's up to. But yeah, it's important for us to, so check out our social media, our Instagram, our YouTube, our Facebook. We're, and you're kind of, what are you doing, Holly, to, to, what's your strategy? I guess I should say to reach out on our, with our content?
Yeah. So one thing that we've started doing and something that I'm making the effort to do is just kind of post more reels to our Instagram page. And I was actually looking at the, at the, at the data and the analytics the other day. And that's kind of where we reach more of our non-follower base, people who haven't been to our page before. And I think that's really going to be beneficial. And again, reaching a younger audience, kind of, as you said, Joe, a lot of young people are interested in this election cycle and kind of news that's been going on. So if we can reach more, more younger folks that way, that's great. And then just kind of updating Instagram and posting links where they're easily accessible and just kind of getting our content out there any way we can, you know, frequently updating those pages is is going to be key.
I would mention also that for as much as we are trying to reach these people, these are also avenues for these people to reach us.
Yeah.
And it is very much a two-way communication. And so by being on these platforms, we are inviting folks to reach out to us.
Absolutely.
And being part of that conversation themselves.
And then we're also hosting kind of discussion forums at the Free Press. And Joe, if you want to talk about more too, about why we're kind of wanting to bring people into the building and kind of show them kind of our side of things and what what we talk about at those, at those forums.
Yeah, we just had the the first one here, October 22nd. And it was a really, we considered a great success. We had about 40 people come to the building and hear about an expert talk about the war in the Middle East and what is going on with that and what we can do about it. And it was really refreshing to see so many people engaged. And we want to be that place where they can come, they come down to our building. And we have, you know, it's usually at 6 o'clock at night. And, you know, we have snacks and and drinks and people can come and and engage with us. And in fact, the next one will be November 19th. It's another Tuesday, I believe. And it'll be about, we're going to have an expert talk about political polarization. So that'll be after the election. So there may be.
Light topic.
Maybe a lot to talk about. Yeah, as as was the Middle East. I was kind of surprised. I thought, well, there, you know, there'll be a few people that'll show up and it'll be good.
Yeah.
But it was really.
Bring out more chairs.
It was. And so that's fantastic, what we're trying to do. We're also trying to engage people with this podcast. And and we're looking for a sponsor for this podcast. So if you or your business is interested in being connected to this podcast and the, and the great journalism we do at the Free Press and and the scintillating conversations we have about it every week, we invite you to contact our advertising department at 344-6364. You can also subscribe to the paper by going to mailing reader, email reader service, mankatofrepress.com or call 625-3764. You can also order photo reprints with our partner, SPX Sports. And and you can call them at 345-7196. There also is a button on our website that just lets you order reprints right from the website and it connects to sport picks. So with that, I think we'll thank everyone for listening and we'll wrap this, this episode up.
Yeah, thank you very much.